We're recording, we got to start this meeting, I don't have a gavel. You gotta do a code of conduct. Subcommittee.
I just want to pull up the outlines.
Let me. If you'd like, I can also share this with you. Those of you.
Yeah.
Great, we're sharing.
So Kevin, I thought the thought was to. Look at the general topics, see if there's topics that are missing and then talk about how. You want to go about signing people to draft them up or when you want to look at other. Communities, Miles has a compendium of a couple of communities, Miles, do you know?
A few.
Okay, great.
We could say, we could put up on a, on a share point.
Yes, happy to.
So we have preparation for me, this is for a select board expectation of members, expectations of officers, allowed communications and items relative to open meeting law and engagement with staff.
So I know some communities expectation of members, they, they write out sort of. Members should read the packet, members should ask questions, I mean, it's like, right? Maybe do some research, expectation of officers is. This one is actually something that the boards talked about, there's nothing in writing that says what the chair, vice chair includes as actual official responsibilities.
Okay.
And yeah, and I think some of it has to actually just be determined. We don't. You know, it's clear that the chair convenes meetings and vice chair acts. Instead of the chair, but really the clerk role is a little less clear, although there's some documents that only.
There's one, yes, one to you. Alright, so we got this with these officers. Open meeting law, that's giant, that's like.
Well, it's mentioned.
Okay.
And there is further down, there's like open meeting law.
I remember team and Miles, was this one having to do with, you know, talking about the items before the meeting, if they're. On the basis of agendas, I'm not sure.
There's been some other, it's a quality code of conduct, that codes of conduct rather, that specifically layout in a little bit more detail. Email, social media, some guidance to say, well, you know, three select board members are all commenting on a social media page about a policy, then that is violation of the open.
Right.
It specifically clearing up not just for members of the board, but also for members of the public.
That would be very helpful. I wonder, maybe we can answer this one, get further down, but if there is a whole other section of the meeting law, maybe we're just consolidating. Yeah, I don't remember why.
Well, because I think, you know. Prepping, when you're prepping for meeting, when you're reading. Some of the packets. This question of how you can ask questions about some of the items.
Oh, okay.
Here without violating. So, I mean, I, I think it. I don't know, it doesn't make sense to have it there, but you're right, I mean.
Alright, engagement with town staff as well, that's doing the whole.
Yeah, and, and sort of the, what, what that constitutes when board members call me and when they go to department. Whether there are protocols around that.
Okay, perfect.
I think one of the other codes, code of conduct that did it well referred to this as. The policy role of the board versus the administrative role of the manager and the communication between staff.
You know, other things in expectation of members can be what they expect from the staff about items, right, that's something. I don't know if I've seen that, but it's helpful to know.
Conduct that meetings in the forum. You know deliberation, respect of differing opinions of other board members, public criticism of board members, other officials or staff. Focus on policy versus personality, sharing all relevant information, move chair, respect the chair's role in facilitating meeting and team mentality.
I think that we need to talk about what happens when those expectations aren't in the moment, both in the moment and.
Yeah.
Can you explain team mentality?
I think. The community that this came from, the board. Made an affirmative statement that they wanted the board to act as a team and that they had certain norms that teams have and that. I think what kind of what said, I knew that in the moment, somebody might say, oh, we've accepted a team norm that we don't do that and that.
Yeah. I, I just. Think that I did this recall a couple of times when again outside, not, not one of, not a member of the staff or of the. Select board was maybe a little. Out of control criticizing members. And, and, and it was just left there, wasn't, wasn't addressed in any way, and I guess I'm wondering, you know, when. Whether in that situation where it's. Participant. Or in some cases, you know, in some meetings, not our meeting, but nonetheless, some meeting members are unpleasant or. And sometimes it's not. Addressed in the moment, I think the fact in having that conventional effect on. Proceedings, but also the morale of the team, and I just wonder, you know, if we need to make that sort of more.
All of this seems like it's stuff that's really obvious and everyone should just be nice to each other, but it's, but also it doesn't, it doesn't work, you know, you need to have kind of rules around it. You need to know that you can count on. Is there another section on public participation?
They're speaking individually, behalf of the board, responsibility of the board, board members and other officers, policymaking versus administration, use of technology, confidentiality, role of town staff. Town council. State law attendance, relationship, ethical considerations.
Okay, so back to that, back to that second bullet, then we do need to have something about how to address. Infilling by non-members.
You know, yeah, I mean, I know that. That there were some legal ramifications to cutting off, for example. Public with participant comment if they got unruly. And so I, I know that there are limitations about what we can do, but I think we need to explore. How that works when people get to, yeah.
So way back, so neither of you, before any changes, the last public meeting before. We had a woman who would not yield and screaming, so we really didn't know how. So it doesn't happen though, yeah, sure, yeah, I. I think that's a really good point.
And just to undercurse, so I'm clear, so you know, this code of conduct is for the board, so obviously it doesn't apply to that member of the public, but it's an agreement amongst the board members, like how will we collectively handle this? If, if a member of the board is disrespectful to others, whether that's participants or other members of the board, staff. Or if. Participant or member of the public, yeah, yeah, I mean, like, not, I'm not talking about this. Other, yeah, yeah, I'm talking about like screaming or non-yielding or. Name calling, you know, a few of that stuff, because that has to happen, and you need to know, I think everyone was like, oh my God, leave us. But there needs to be sort of. An understanding on the team about how.
Yeah, I think there needs to be language that says chair should address it and chair doesn't address members' capacity, yeah.
Can we change attorney?
Yeah.
I, I mean, I have nothing wrong with doing a frank and candid exchange of opinions, and that's what we do, but I see. You know, how your point is, there is a point where I call hated the house on something and we have to allow the board to handle this civilly. Effectively, so I. Thinking of this situation, you're trying to, but. Yeah, that was, that was a really difficult meeting. I think we should have some language in there that we can. Respect the board. As a whole. Alright, do you want to go into next?
Before you move on. So, do these make sense, right, I mean, there. We're fortunate here, mostly things haven't happened, but we've seen it made in the paper about board members criticizing other board members in public, right, and so the role, the role of code of conduct is to say. You know, we won't do that, and then you have kind of language around saying we're not doing.
Well, I think there has to be a space for the. I mean, you have to be able to screen on issues, I just think we need to. Make sure that these restricted issues, I mean, just like in a town meeting where you don't call out. The, the member whom you're responding or what have you, you can still address though your decision. Statement, that has to happen, I guess my, my only concern about. Team mentality is that, that seems to me. To think that we're all going to be all the time, and I think there has been a history of consensus, it's great as long as it exists. But it doesn't mean that you're a team if you don't have.
Yeah, yeah, that's not what I like, that's not certainly what I thought, but we don't need to have.
Yeah. I, I wonder if, when I read this list, I feel like some applied like with the second differences and stuff, but I, I feel like. If there's a fear that it's going to swing too much to team that mentality and people are going to perceive that as you need to have kumbaya, you could be explicit and say, we as a board welcome dissent.
But.
It, it has to be about policy, not personality, it has to be about, you know, it can't be about a person. Another member, but it.
Yeah.
It's something I think may be worth discussing if you want explicitly to say it, so that all of the other things don't make it seem like. Your one person has to put the five people on the board.
Right, and you know, I, I know board members who've said that they have the worst EPO draft in what, right, and it's like.
Yeah, no.
If you have to have, if you have to have a code of conduct to prevent that, but it is, it's just good to have language. Yeah, you don't yell. One of our rules, we don't yell.
Okay. We're, we're speaking individually or on behalf of the board, campaign versus official capacity, disclosure, perception, considerations. Board actions alone as binding, respect for different things of other board members, statements regarding potential votes.
Do. You, that the board can only act when all five of you are in a meeting, so you could have a board that, a board member who says, yes, we're going to do that, but. You know, that's one of five, so just reiterating. Only five people or four or five. I don't remember what F1 is going to be, as you know. I guess it could be, you know, saying how you're going to vote before you heard it.
Yeah, so now it's mud boys.
Trying to avoid that.
A lack of a vote, how we, I mean. You know, do X or Y will happen.
And maybe, you know, at least being open to hearing the presentation before you decide you're going to vote.
Yeah.
And then can we just talk about A?
Campaign versus official capacity.
I guess I just want to clarify that. I mean, that's, I, I assume that that's. An individual versus. Official capacity or like the projection, what you would do.
Right, yeah.
Just making that distinction to include. I'm speaking as a campaign for instance.
We're speaking on behalf of the rest of the board, campaign events versus official capacity events. Less of an issue that I perceive here in town versus other bodies and boards, but nonetheless, something that could potentially not be harmful to have on paper.
Lot of councils that have you.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I guess I just would love to go over also. You know, a lot of us are involved in the. Politics and those are, that is part of them and just how we navigate that, that's like official. I mean. I, I feel like that is obvious when you're doing it, but I just want to make sure that it's kosher enough.
Okay.
So not just your own campaign. Not just your own campaign for select board, but supporting that somebody else's campaign for a non-town office or, or even, I mean. Division that represents the town, but not in.
Yeah, are you thinking that maybe an explicit acknowledgement that board members have a right to do this and it's not expected that they're all back that they.
Yeah, maybe, maybe, and, and that, that's, that's fine, that, that's okay, but where the line is. Yeah. To make sure that it's all. For holy culture.
Yeah, like I see it like the Icons event, the holy end of March, in March. Is an invited event, a slap one, that's not a free event.
I, I wonder if. If we could reference existing campaign finance laws, OCPF laws, kind of public data stuff, and, and that the code of conduct is that all the members are, are agreed to be compliant with all of those, but I think about actions taken kind of. In proximity to an election, right, like I'm thinking of an example where there was an incumbency elected official who. Kind of, there was a question, was, was he using his public office for campaign reasons, and he was doing something that he would do in his normal course of this office. But it was very close to the time of the election, right, and so the way it was perceived was like in proximity to when the election date was, that gets very complicated, but like you have state laws in place to set that out, so maybe we just reference them.
And say that. That come up, that, that reminds me of is that when the board, when those vouchers come up, it's usually for an period of heightened interest on a lot of inside and. Policy on whether you really want or depends, like something that you.
Right.
Because that's, it's been sort of an unwritten one, but it's.
Want to go to four? Responsibility of the board and board members and officers, board's responsibility to residents, government, other elected bodies and staff, community and its members. Officers' responsibility to residents, government, other elected bodies, staff, community and its members.
Sorry, that was my sort of.
Yeah, I'm trying to like brainstorming what these might be that. You know, board members commit to calling people back or board members will have, if you decide to do this, have your pilot will have office hours or those kinds of things you might put in. I mean, you have communities that say, or members would be stashed with respect, you know, I don't think we've ever had to say that, but that's the kind of thing that we call them the one other places.
I would love it if we could allow example, social media from. List, I mean, I, it's not on this, it's right there, but in terms of. What the officials responsible are to respond.
I, I didn't say that you wouldn't, you wouldn't.
No, no, yeah, I get it, I just, I'm just thinking that in particular, as one-on-one communication by phone or email or. Person or what have you, it's one thing, but I, I feel like social media is like a whole other sphere and I personally don't want to make. Not only do I not want to make. There, but I want to make. Yeah, personally, but I just feel like it's. Completely without rules and. But I recognize that a lot of people do a lot of. Public discourse there, and so I just, I kind of feel like I want to, to say something about it.
Actually, I would love some policy about not, because I'm not settled, I do, but my understanding is that there's jeopardy if you speak on social media, if you make public statements. That may have weight. The legal. You, you're effectively, you're initiating. That was probably one board matter, one committee, so.
Just to go back to what Katie said again, I think that if, the, the preamble to this should be like, we're going to follow all of the ethics laws, the competitive ethics laws and the campaign values laws, but this is how it will look in practice.
Okay.
Or even an overt above it, like, yes, if the law says you can interact with the media, you might have a policy that says, we don't. We wouldn't accept her on our own.
Alright. Yeah, this is no replacement.
Alright, want to go on to five? Policymaking versus administration of policy, role of town manager and elected administrators in G. The clerk versus board.
I don't know what that clerk.
Teddy.
I, I know.
We have the clerk here.
You know, this one usually comes up when you have a situation where individuals, select board members are calling the EPOs and follow this legal. Like pathing of manager, it's a common problem, you know, nationally. So this is just sort of, you'd have a conversation about when. And then on the converse, the manager setting up policy that we're going to do this observance that really should come to the board, right, so parsing out whose roles are on this one, so I think this is a good one to put out there. We know it when we see it, but sometimes it's hard to explain.
Right.
In many communities, there are more elected administrators.
I see Teddy as well, yeah, she's the one.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, we're back to usage technology, meetings, pretend meetings virtually in context, meeting law, social media.
Somebody had suggested a while back that they would prefer people don't text during meetings, I, I, I read that only to say that that is one of the.
I heard you cannot.
You mean legally?
Legally, that tells me that you cannot. Unless you're having open, unless you're sharing with anyone, that's, that's discourse happening in a meeting.
Well, that assumes that your discourse is about the meeting and not like your kids.
Yes.
Dinner.
Yeah, the kids at the.
So if there was a, if there was positive that no one's cell phones are being used period, then there would never be a question about open meeting law violation of texting between board members, because it's just not possible, right, but if you're like, I have a sick kid. So that kind of nice.
So and part of the discussion might be, you know, you don't want to say who's what, but it's like, I am the room, he is, and we'll put this here, and if something comes up, I'm going to leave the room.
I mean. Because boards have. Unverifiable, and I can understand that it. Could create a perception, but I think that if we all agree, I mean, and write it down, that we're not going to text each other during a meeting. I mean, there has to, we have, we're agreeing. Not everything is going to be there by a while, so.
Agreed.
Great.
And, and you know, putting it forward, it would help if you have an I, an I, an Apple computer that you can text on and you're. So, yeah, so it's, it's, it's the ingredients.
Yes, well, I think that's true across the board here, we're, we're just making a public agreement. Free and then lie, I mean. This is all predicated on. Well, and, and trust, I mean, if we're elected to do this down properly, but. We're declaring and setting expectations of what we.
No, say so, have you got that?
I just want to raise that, I think one thing that's come up that made the category is. Attending meetings virtually. What, what might that mean if you were in a session virtually, you know, because that really is supposed to be a private group and. What you're, yeah. Either that commitment is that you're a person or that affirming that you're alone or affirming you're not recording or whatever the case may be.
Do you want to go into picking how to break these up? I'm like. I'm sorry.
There's more pages.
Confidentiality. Board discussion and deliberation, executive session.
I don't know what the first one is.
I mean, there shouldn't be. Unless, I mean, we're in another meeting. That's fine, but that. I mean, maybe it's just that we shouldn't be doing it.
And that's a poorly phrased one on my behalf, in the other code of contact, of conduct, it states that anything that is discussed at that open meeting per open meeting law or whatever statute is applicable to the state that we took. The code of conduct from, it's to say that this should happen in public as opposed to executive session.
Yeah.
Which is more of an open meeting law.
And you know, eight, there may be. Maybe a lot of overlap with eight and some of the others we already talked about, so we can take it with that.
Well, of the board and the town staff.
This is really kind of what I was talking about, just like, yeah, who calls whom and when.
Yes, let's leave eight and just put the other one in.
Probably, or, or the other way around, but I do think that having an agreement that you'll set goals in.
Yeah. And narrow them down to make it.
Yeah.
We've got to find a way, I trust you will.
Alright, nine, use of town council, how to communicate for what purposes, contexts on board versus. So explain, Steve.
So see, I don't know where it comes in the, the versions that Miles and Katie looked at, but. I would say that if a board member individually needs support of town council and they have an unfettered right to call, right, the. It has happened in the past of. Different board members calling town council, I have different resolve on questions, so. I don't, that may be what context of supporting more, supporting member, do you know what?
I think it was just the two scenarios, like are you asking a question about that to the board, like, you know, what's in our legal jurisdiction versus are you saying, I think I might have a conflict with him, but it's kind of part of the town council. About it, and you know, how are you, so I think maybe it's just being clear that you can call purple.
Yeah, although the board may, you know, the board may want some guardrails around the board, you gotta call and, you know, if it, if it's, I need to be educated on this subject matter you raised, then that one versus. You know, I had a situation that I know of where a board member got an opinion of council that I remember didn't want, didn't agree with and did not write. Got that. Do you know what I'm trying to say, so that wasn't the select board.
Part of this could be rolled into officers' roles, so if the board wanted to say that, you know, only certain officers, that's what some other codes of conduct layout is.
So. As far as getting a decision or a. In the paper, in the, whatever, but in terms of getting education, I think that we need to make anyone to call. Regardless of. Based on board.
As we want.
But. In the discussion. In the discussion. The follow-up um to some issues in the past that have been like, uh, do you need a? I would love to clear up where that line lies because I'm not sure, I mean. I'm not sure that I would know that. And I also think that hindsight is 20/20. So, you know, when you're. In a place where you think you might have issues, but you're not sure, I mean, you're trying to proceed properly. I just, I, I would like it if there was like a cut and dried kind of, this is why. Practice. But I fear moving too far down the road and then realizing, oh, I should have. Couple of months ago, when I didn't, I didn't realize, but now. Um, so I wonder if there's a way to clear that up. And I mean, I hate, I hate to think that it would have to be like every single time. You think you have conflict, you have a conflict and an opinion, because it could be something super minor. And that's a lot of time.
Are you specifically talking about conflict?
I'm specifically. Of my example. But I think we need to make that more formal.
Um, on the communication part. You can't win like information from the town council, as long as this thing don't reply all.
We should put reply all there. Yeah, and sometimes a lot of town council is confidential document, but it isn't necessarily something that's going to be discussed. By the board, even in executive session, it's just something I.
You know what, though, when, I know you should never reply all. Pretty much any, but um when someone replies, it would be really great if they could tell whoever's up there to reply. Because otherwise you don't know. And then you feel like you're just. Yes. Yeah. When someone emails, especially on the email before, you know, with the general, not to go to everyone. And you don't want to reply all, but you also don't want to like.
So if Miriam says, I'll call that person. And that's the end of the story. That's really possible. But there have been times when. Or, or I can, I can do it, you know, any person at all, I can do it. Okay, that, we should have some of their. When somebody is going to call someone, you certainly have.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But you'd like to know.
It's just like, I would like to know that someone's done it.
It'd be more. Maybe responsibilities of members.
Yeah.
Perhaps, yeah.
Move on. And plans to use town policy, state law.
Maybe we just make that the preamble.
Uh, attendance at events.
So here's an example, the board has an underwritten rule that if there's an event that they get invited to, that's, you know. Legit event, then the board always wants to have at least one person there. That's sort of something like.
Yeah, can you tell me the definition of a legit event?
Um, I can't think of a non-legit event. The things are ribbon puddings. You know, I, I guess a, a political event that somebody's having might be not something that calls them. Somebody's having a campaign event and invite someone, it's never been like, oh, somebody has to go there.
So let me give you two examples. Uh, one is the mineral lighting tonight that I saw a flyer for, but didn't show up on our calendar anywhere. So I'm going. But um, so like kind of community events that the town is not necessarily sponsoring, that's one thing. And then. Um, while that was like the YMCA fundraiser. Okay, and one of the issues with that was being, being by dress and.
Okay, so here's your thing. When I say an event, um, I met community and, right, so. Um, I don't know how the mineral lighting got passed us.
The rabbi never sent, at least me or.
Usually they do, and usually they can probably do that. If you're just having the menorah, you know, the legal women voters have been on our camera. Yeah, um, this issue of being invited to a ticket event. With no expectation of pay, uh, that should be under somewhere. Yeah.
Yeah, I know there's a form, I learned that.
Yeah, to disclose.
Right. But if you're speaking.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I just, I would like to explore the ins and outs of that because fifty dollars, I don't know how long ago that was. Considerably more than fifty dollars. I, I just, I'm not sure.
There are also some.
And also then, like, we also live in this community, so whether I'm a select or member or not, like, there are certain things I want to attend if I'm gonna. I, I just want.
Well, right, and if you're, as a resident, there's probably not going to be.
Right, but, um, so saying in, in certain capacities, you have to buy tickets, in certain capacity you don't, but you're there and then people. I feel like it's left for number. Doing it right.
Yeah, you know, the, it, it, I don't know if it's up there, but the issue of expenses is complicated, right? So. Um, the board's stipend changed probably when that fifty dollar vote was intended for those things, but it hasn't come. So now is there, should this? You know, one of the things we can talk about is whether that stipend should go up for that very reason. So if you're, you know, if you're going to an event. And the twelve hundred dollars is a company. And also like dying to Boston or violating.
All right. We have campaign events that we brushed, touched on that previously, right? That'll be here as well. All right, all right, relationship with community as a voice, as an advocate, a leader, as a listener, as an explorer.
I feel like that's covered already. Yeah.
All right, ethical considerations, state guidelines, professional M and A guidelines, using public resources. Gifts and favors conflict of interest.
I guess the question on this is, are, was it intended to highlight what the state law says to give people a need of understanding or?
Why we had it in some section there? Yeah, I think that was the original reason, but it might make some. I don't know if it's redundant now.
Okay, yeah.
All right, yeah, the guidelines will be sprinkled in as we discuss sections.
Or they're just having it in the preamble, so you have all state law, and then we can attach them.
We can attach uh, addendums, you know, the O M L, other summaries of that.
Yeah.
And the MMA is here specifically because they do have a very comprehensive guide for select.
Do they have, does that, you mean the support handbook?
Yeah.
Is it in an ethics section?
I believe so, though. Ninety-five percent fidelity. I'll get back with.
All right. Yeah, by who and by what?
And when does it need to be in the moment? Yeah, no, this is more like.
All right, yeah, so this is of the, like, you're out of bounds.
Yeah.
All right, are, do, do we go deeper? It's just something like now there's, like, how do we self-advocate? There's a case in native, you know, I think, I'm vague on this. Think a board member of some board was on a general sense.
Yeah.
So what was the? Yeah, so what's the response? What's the authority? This is the solution. And then on this, we could also talk, yeah, just generally in the moment.
Yeah. I was thinking about having to respond to insurrection.
I know.
So Miles, do you think you have a good sense of the focus? So, um, we could um, schedule another meeting and flesh out, you know, aldermen.
And quickly, yes, there are questions.
It seems like it might be wise to think about at least. Having some ability of select word to enforce. Ethical violations. Because in the past. That's electorally always saying, we can't, when, sorry, I know it's a problem, but we can't do anything. You don't have any power to do. So it seems like this would be a prime opportunity to assess whether that's really the right way.
Right. You're right. It, it's a tricky one because. You're elected by the voters, you're going to be spoken about, right? But is, what is the?
The voters haven't spoken about a particular.
Right, so.
We're talking about conduct, or are we talking about? Conduct that violates the state statute law. But I think those are two separate things. Code of conduct. One of the, one of the issues for the code of conduct is that we follow the state law. Yes, so if. Under your code of conduct, which says I must follow the state law. I break your code of conduct because if I'm not following the state law, do you have any authority to do anything about it?
I like that, yeah, we should suss it out. Always. Hold on one second. Just say your name and your address, please.
I was just saying, the status was very quick, so you can establish the state. If you can set a stricter code of conduct, you can have your own enforcement for that code of conduct that you.
Does that include removal of the office?
Probably no, but you can do things like referral.
Right, right.
Right, um, or you can do probably legally reprimands or. Oh, and it is probably extension of elected officials and when official. As town manager, you would have the authority to do. What you do is town manager, which.
So some investigations still there. Presenting some options.
It's on here, I guess in the actual version of the procedure. State law makes a distinction between actual contest and just then. And I think that appearance is a rare area. Um, and so it might be helpful to, to mention that. Because you can, in, in case of appearance, you can just disclose the meaning that you have appears of property, you have some sort of relationship at the rise level. And that might be helpful to be part of the policy as a practice to disclose.
Let me speak on. You had mentioned that there might be limitations on dealing with.
Yeah.
And so most, a lot of the case law is that comes up, I can share. It's because the board, the public, whatever, commission board, whatever. Um, didn't give fair notice to the member of the public that there were going to be specific consequences. It's like trespass, you have to give fair notice and describe the consequence. So if you say, if this continues, we may have to ask you to leave. Then you're probably legally on firm ground. If a person just becomes unruly and you call police and they drag them out, that's where you can get a. Legal dispute.
Yeah, the other thing that's moving forward says, and if you don't leave, we won't, we won't do any necessity.
Yeah.
So January, I'm looking at the first. Worksman.
Miles, would you mind sending that up?
Already on it.
And then we also talk about hiring certain cleaning and like M and A.
We need to meet or it'd be part of the thing?
I don't know. I mean, I don't know how do I do that? How do we bring them in, some consultants or just?
Figure out what, what's going to grab to, who should, we should be bouncing it off. Yeah, maybe somebody from the time that has been operating a long time.
Right, if anyone else wants to join.
Well, I mean, the board, the board appointed the committee, so. Figure out, really active forward. You do need a motion to.
All right. We, um, we're going to turn to the motion.
Even though you moved.
All in favor. We are returned.
Great, thank you.